The United States of America and its jury of political saints, one nation under our invisible liberty and justice.
All right, Board Manager, let this session discuss personnel, labor negotiations, and real estate issues. I'm going to be recording. Shannon Green. I'll take you there. I'm going to bring her in, okay? Citizen's speak, we didn't have anybody sign up. So we can move into our first presentation. Quentin, please may I know his name?
Okay, I'll go ahead and get us started here if that's all right. So my name is Becky, I'm the Director of Special Education here at Cannon Mac. I have here, and I'll introduce him in a minute, a student who is doing some pretty great things here for himself and to help others. So there's something that we engaged in in past years, and last year we actually worked through something called the Wheels of Friendship at Borland Manor. And what that is, is it's through Michaela's Voice. If you haven't heard about that, that is an inclusion opportunity, and we had a grant that we were able to utilize. And in that, we engage in multiple inclusion assemblies, and we had the students work together to produce some artwork that is on the wall at Borland Manor. It's interactive artwork. A lot of our students use it for sensory breaks. You can take a piece off and switch it around and move it around, and it's a great thing. So if you haven't seen it, maybe you'll see that at Borland Manor. So when we did this Michaela's Voice, Kim Rash is Michaela's mom, and she was the person who was running it at that point because she needed some other people who have now since stepped forward in that role. But when we were there, she said they had a student presenter from Mount Lebanon, and his name is Holden, and he would go around to all of the different schools and present about his own disability and tie that into Michaela's Voice so that the kids could hear from another student. Well, hard for Holden to make it around to all of the schools. So they asked, do you have any students who you think might want to become a student co-presenter? And before they even finished the question, one student immediately popped into my mind, and that is Quentin. So Quentin is a 10th grade student at Cannon McMillan High School. Would you like to stand up? He is a student who, the reason he came to mind is because he is extremely bright, he is extremely funny, and anyone who spends more than two minutes, which I guarantee you by the end of this, you will see the exact same thing, he is contagious with his positivity that he shares with us. So today, I wanted Quentin to be able to present a little bit about himself and what he likes doing for Michaela's Voice. What do you think? Do you feel a little bit better? Can you say hi to him?
He's good!
Feels good, okay. All right, so, you good?
Yes.
Okay, no, 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 come back. You're not going anywhere, stand right here next to me. Okay. All right, so let's talk a little bit about yourself. Can you tell me a little bit about yourself? How old are you?
Seventeen.
Okay. Can you talk a little louder?
Seventeen!
Seventeen, okay. And what's something that you like, that you love doing? Do you go to Planet Fitness?
Yes.
What do you do there?
Get my gains out.
Oh, you get your gains out. Okay, so you do, look at that.
Yeah, the man over there, Mr. Paul over there, yeah!
So you do lots of pull-ups and push-ups, don't you? Like, I hear from one day you do like over fifty.
Yeah.
Okay. And was there a time that you won a pull-up competition, I think at North Strabane?
Yep, that's it.
Yep, okay.
That guy over there.
Mr. Daniels. Okay, so what do you want to be when you grow up?
Singer.
A singer, who?
Michael Jackson.
Michael Jackson?
Luke Bryan.
Or Luke Bryan. Okay, you got any news for us?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Michael Jackson.
Yeah, the guy, Paul Dohall!
Now you can see what he is contagious and everybody loves to be around him. I knew it would only take one question to get him out of the shell. All right, come back up here, buddy. All right, let's talk about some, let's talk about some fun facts about yourself. Tell me something fun about you. What do you like to do on the weekends with your parents?
Drink coffee with my daddy, your mommy.
You drink coffee with them, yeah. What do you eat for breakfast?
Chicken nuggets every morning.
Chicken nuggets every single morning? That sounds like the breakfast of champions to me.
I buy ham over there, Paul Dohall.
And what, Mr. Daniels, what are, what's your nicknames? What are some nicknames people call you?
Super Boot.
So, what is it, Super Boot?
Yeah.
Okay, what else?
Super Q.
Super Q? Superman?
Yeah.
Q, Q-Man? All kinds of things, yes, okay. So as you can see, it was very easy to make a decision as to him coming to mind as a co-presenter. So let's get to Michaela's Voice real quick. What do you do for Michaela's Voice?
It brings happiness.
It brings you happiness in your heart. Why is it, do you, when you go to these, you present in front of, who do you present in front of? A lot of kids?
Yeah, the kids.
A lot of them?
Yeah.
And what do you talk about? You talk about Michaela's story?
Yeah.
And?
And myself.
And yourself. Do you like talking about yourself?
Yep, and talking over there, Mr. Daniels.
So what is one of your goals when doing Michaela's Voice? A reason that you want to do it and why you like to do it, because you want to help spread what? What did you tell me?
Kindness.
Yeah, you want to help spread kindness, okay. So do you like doing Michaela's Voice and presenting?
Yeah, I do.
So far, I think you've presented at two different times to schools, right? And then just last month, Mrs. Oberleah and myself got to go to Hershey, and he presented at a Hershey conference in front of a bunch of adults. How was that? Was that okay? All right. And he presented in front of a bunch of the adults about what Michaela's Voice is and why he likes to do Michaela's Voice, and told us a lot of fun facts about himself. So why do you think it's important to share your story?
Easy question.
Why?
My music.
To share your music?
Yeah.
So he did say at the Hershey conference that his favorite instrument is a microphone, which totally fits, because you give him a microphone and you're going to get something pretty cool out of that, right? So Quentin has been doing an awesome job. He has another one scheduled in? Sharpsville?
Oh, yeah.
Sharpsville, an hour and a half away, and that is coming up at the end of this month. And so far, that's all that's on his schedule, but I'm pretty sure that he's going to book up even quicker. So today, we just wanted to share with you the extension from Michaela's Voice being something that we just had and brought into our school and did in one of our buildings, and now we have a student who is advocating for himself, he is speaking for himself, and he's going out and telling his story and making other people's lives better for that, and that's pretty cool. So we wanted to share you, and thank you.
I said this guy, Daniel.
Thank you. He keeps you in your heart, guy.
And then Paul Dohall.
The Hulk, how about Spider-Man?
Yeah! There's my man over there.
All right, thank you. Thanks, you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Business!
Thanks, Peggy. Thanks, Becky. All right, so moving on, administrative reports, Scott.
Something other than a few reminders with, this month, we're at middle school in the evening for our parent council, and there will be the tour.
Yes.
On Tuesday, and there will be the tour for the community after that. We are also planning for our Title I program. It's called, it's our spring meeting, and it'll be called Reading Under the Lights. I don't know, I think you guys were, it was going on while we had a meeting last year.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, and it was pretty much wrapping up after our meeting, but it is well-attended. We get, you know, high school students involved to some degree, parents come out, we get some local companies and businesses to sponsor, the parents can read to their children underneath the lights. And this year, provided the field's glued down, we're going to do it at the new field up at the middle school. And easy too, if the weather isn't kind, we can easily just move it back in and do it in the gym. So that's why we selected that. And on the, I forget what the sheet's called, but it's got all your committee responsibilities. Julie, you were listed as Hall of Honor Representative. Emmanuel had held that position, and as long as you are good with that, then I was just going to want to confirm that tonight, and we are going to have a meeting in April. And right now, we have over twenty nominations for the next call, so again, another great crop of candidates. So we'll be looking at that, and I appreciate you being the board representative.
How many get selected out of this?
We do five.
We could do up to five.
Up to five.
Yeah, up to five.
Yeah, we look for that easy separation line, so if it's better between four and five, or three and four, you know, just, so, because last year, anyway, we had a number of people that were all tied, you know.
Okay, that's it for me. Any questions?
Two. Yeah, just a couple of brief items, wanted to give you an update on some staffing. Been telling you for a couple months now that we're kind of approaching that busy time of year for recruiting, and that's going to become a reality next week. We have our first job fair of the year. We're going over to Groveland Convention Center, taking part of the PERC Job Fair, it's the Pittsburgh Educational Regional Consortium. And in preparation for that, we made five professional postings live today. And the job fair sent us a candidate list yesterday, so we're able to go by, go out by cert, and we've already made contact with those folks and invite them to apply for these postings by certification. So hopefully, what we're going to do is next week, when we get to the job fair, we're going to be able to schedule interviews with them, and we're looking to start the interviews late March or early April. So five positions that we're looking to fill there, and we're getting an early jump this year. Typically, this doesn't start until late April, May sometimes, so we're getting after it early this year, but so is everybody else. So it's kind of a cyclical type pattern, and I'm going to try to report back to you some good news for April. So the other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, there's going to be a frontline agreement for your approval on next week's agenda. And this is a frontline education, human capital management, and recruiting and hiring bundle. And what this is, this is a talent acquisition system that allows us, at the push of a button, to reach a big number of applicants, and schedule them for interviews, and just coordinate that whole interview and hiring process. This goes a step further, and it's got an onboarding, onboarding component to it, so it's going to allow us to have some capabilities for digital onboarding that we haven't had in the past. It's quite an upgrade from what we currently have. If any of you want any more information on that, I'd be glad to provide that for you.
So we're going to replace, we'll be replacing our, all right.
There is. Yeah, we have a Power School platform that's in place right now. We have the talent acquisition piece of it, we don't have the onboarding piece of it, so this will be a more complete package, and I think it's going to be a shiny one for us.
And it was better than picking up that piece to from?
It was. We actually, we actually had the Power School onboarding piece, and it was a business. Not user-friendly for staff or for users, and we actually broke that contract with them last year.
So how does this tie in with the Power School?
So we don't have a Power School, we're not going to be doing anything. We have a various amount of Power School applications.
Yeah, the application, because it says the SIS for the class.
Yeah, we do applicant, uh, select performance tracking through them.
The school student management system.
And we'll be keeping that, though?
Yeah, that's one.
All right, any other questions on that? Not as well as we'd like to be.
All right, any questions for Quentin?
All right, thank you, too. Jordan?
Good evening. Some updates on a few projects going on. Starting with the middle school. We have a few milestones still to hit on the middle school, a few of those in the dates, projected dates. The track paving and walk to the field is supposed to be completed by April fourteenth. The field is down and ready to go. We don't have the track completed yet, so hopefully we get that done in April. Well, the paving done in April, then we'll lay the track in May. Got to get a little bit warmer temperatures for the track here, sort of paving. All landscaping is scheduled for May twelfth, and the boardroom table is in fabrication right now. Completion's expected by the end of this month, installation's about another week, and then we have to tie in all the technology components. So we're projecting the end of April to have the boardroom ready. I know you guys are going to miss this one, but pretty excited to get over there eventually. A1, we're waiting for West Penn Power to set the pools so we can run the power over to the lights at the field. We're projecting that by the end of the month. However, we all know it's like to work with a utility company, so we're kind of at their mercy at this point. Once they set the pool, A1's ready to run the power and have the lights operational over there. Site contract, we have our paving for the rest of the parking lot and the entrance, our little dip that we have at the front. Soon as plants are open, that's going to be Mewley's first project, so we're hoping next month, paving plans open up, get the paving complete. The major milestone we did hit with the middle school is we were issued our permanent, obviously, permit this week. So the radio repeater system is complete, it works, and the auditorium is finished as well. So all permits are done, acquired, and we just have punchless items to get the project complete totally. Sports building parking lots, we have about thirty thousand dollars worth of work left to do. It's mainly landscaping, we have a few punchless items up there. So again, once the weather turns, hopefully we close that one out, hang out what's been lingering on us for quite a while now, so almost there to end that one. New school street extension, you'll see an item on tonight's agenda for that. We approved the deed of dedication, which then some changes were made on Cecil Township's end, so we've been going back and forth with them to clear up that language. Once that is cleared up, we'll get it back to you for a new approval. We did get our application from Penn Dot back for the HOP. They gave us some comments and a few things that they want to see from us and Cecil Township. We're working with Cecil to get all those in order, and then we will resubmit our package to Penn Dot, hopefully that's the final time. Once our HOP is awarded, we'll go out to bid, and our goal now is to get all that work completed over summer. Baseball and softball turf projects, we are going to start work next month. We're going through some middles now. We met with the baseball and softball coach to finalize some colors of the turf yesterday, so we got that back to the contractor, and we'll start next month, and hopefully get those done, though, pretty quick turnaround. Stadium projects, scoreboard is complete today. Today was the final connection, so scoreboard's ready to go. I'm talking with A1, the electrical contractor that did the project, to kind of set up a demonstration, and I'll send that out to the group, and kind of see the capabilities of the new scoreboard, and kind of what we can look forward to for the upcoming seasons. HVAC, we have all our some middles, we're waiting for some equipment, but we expect that to be completed by May fifteenth. So we got a quick turnaround there. The electrical equipment seems to be what's holding everything up on projects at this point. We'll talk about that here, a couple items. So we did have to upgrade the electrical, we had the power here, so we're waiting for the unit to get on site, and that will be done pretty quick as well. New Wildville Elementary School, we had our initial kickoff meeting on February ninth. We are expecting, I believe, May, our first conceptual design. So that's in HHSUR's hands now. They'll give us an initial plan, and then we'll kind of go from there on what we like, what we don't like, and get that project going as well.
Is the footprint going to be bigger than the use, we think, same size?
It is slightly bigger than the use, yeah. It's bigger than the use.
We, we, we did seven, we did seven classrooms per grade level of use, we're going to, we're going to plan a year for a while. Based on demographics.
Hills Hendersonville Elementary, we got our initial budget for that project back. Administration's looking at that budget, and a couple other options we have before we make a recommendation. Talking of lead times for electrical, no matter what option we choose there, we have to upgrade electrical in that building, and switch gears right now, it's seventy week lead time. Seven zero, seventy weeks.
So we went on fifty-two to seventy in one month.
Yeah, so the fastest that project could happen, if we pulled the trigger right now today, is about a year and a half. And twice, twice. And rate of price is just continually going up. So we're going to look at options there and come back to the board and give you some options to decide on. South Central Roof, we're looking at a restoration project there. Again, a replacement is, it's quite an overhaul on that project. We are about a year and a half out of warranty on that roof. We have four percent wet insulation, so we can replace that and do a restoration project at about half the cost of replacement. We have a pre-bid meeting tomorrow, which is mandatory for all bidders, and then we open bids on the twenty-second. So after we review the bids, we'll have a recommendation for the board on what that restoration project looks like, how much warranty on that. In the bid documents, we have a twenty and twenty-five year warranty option, so we'll kind of see what the price difference is on those two, which would double the life of our roof on there now, so it's a pretty good option. The only other items that you'll see tonight, the bus and tire bids, we did receive those and opened them. They're under review right now. Had a few exceptions that we sent back to the contractors and bid, waiting for some responses, but hopefully Monday or Tuesday early next week, we'll have that and get the recommendation over to the board as well.
Typically, we have vans included.
Yeah, so we did bid vans as well, and it seems every school district went out to look for seven, ten fashioner vans in the past two years. There are none on the market, none, and if you try to buy a van right now, they're probably pretty expensive as well. So we got no bids on the vans, and what we do for buses, we go straight to the manufacturer. So we just get in line, build the buses as we order them. We're going to end up doing the same thing for vans, and again, the lead time's seven months to a year. But our fleet is relatively new, we're just getting on the same schedule as our buses, because as we bought all new vans two years ago, if we don't do anything now, in ten, fifteen years, we're going to have to buy all new forty vans again. So we put that on a rotation, a cycle, to always have some new inventory and not let everything get passage repaired, so we'll also get out and get in line for some vans as well.
So the only thing you left out was Mr. Benny and Mr. Brandon taking second seats?
Yeah, we, two boys second seats in wrestling, and three girls second, and one champ, so had really good pressing season as well.
Any questions for you? All right, Becky?
I get Quentin my time.
Okay, I appreciate that. Morgan?
So I just came from the school where they are having their first performance in the brand new auditorium.
Go speak, okay.
I came from the new middle school where they are having their first performance in the brand new auditorium, it's a little mat concert. I guess they went away for years and they brought it back. Every member of our support staff took part in that, so I got some good pictures of some stuff from that that I'll be sharing on our social media and our newsletter at the end of this month. And I just sent it.
Talk to them so they can schedule it on the night.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it was actually meant to be earlier this month, but I don't think the auditorium was quite good yet, so they had to push it back a little bit, so this is kind of the made-up version one, I guess. But I'll, I'll share some, so if you want me to send you some clips from it, I can send you the video together later, some of the songs. I didn't get all of it, obviously, I haven't been here, but I got a few. And then just to kind of piggyback off of what Scott mentioned earlier, this is Mary wanted me to mention how important the Hall of Honor was to Mr. By, I guess, he was kind of the one who started it and organized it, so thank you for carrying that on. And like Scott mentioned, I only pushed it out once to the community, and we've already gotten twenty different unique nominations, so I think it'll be a good year for that. Thank you, Scott.
Any questions for Morgan? All right.
All right, thank you. So at the end of March, we had a cyber school presentation to the curriculum committee, went very well. So we've identified who we'd like to recommend to the board, and Mr. Chambers, Dr. Tran and I are just working on some internal things, and we hope to maybe bring a cyber agreement forward with a provider in our April meeting. So good things in that direction, making positive strides there. Greg is doing great things, as well as our elementary teachers are with our CKEY LA Amplify K through six program. Positive evals continue to come in from the pilot teachers, and really, the cross-curricular component is what's huge about it. So Dr. Tran just shared a lesson that he went to observe where a teacher was utilizing this reading program, but they're also incorporating history in a lesson on taxation without representation. He shared examples how teachers are creating stages in their classroom as part of these lessons. So he's moving forward with a formal adoption and implementation for that in grades three through six next year, and then we hope to expand it down into lower grade levels as well after that. They're also rolling out the K-six level formalized social media education program. As we know, social media can be both a positive influence as well as negative influence in our students' lives, and by the time they get to the secondary level where we're really educating them on it, it's too late. So working with our school counselors, they've designed a component where the school counselors are going to push into the elementary classrooms and start educating the students about appropriate uses of social media, screen time, detriments of screen time, how it can impact your sleep patterns. So we're really excited to get that out, because that was something that was lacking at the elementary levels, was, was talking about social media education. I know we have some parents in the audience that attended parent council earlier this year, where the Asquera project came to present on the dangers of social media, particularly with teenage students, and how it's used for human and sex trafficking. So we've been working, Ms. Taylor and I, with Mr. Joe Sweeney, on a presentation that they're going to come and do at the high school level. We're trying to get it scheduled for this year, but with testing coming up in May, and we're trying to fit it in in April, but if we don't get it in in April, we'll definitely have it at the beginning of next school year, and we'll send home a letter to our parents just letting them know what the presentation's going to talk about with an opt-out form as well. But we'd be naive to not acknowledge that these issues are encroaching on us, and we probably have a student, unfortunately, that may be impacted at the high school level. During our meeting, Mr. Sweeney shared how he's recently been involved in cases both at Upper St. Clair, as well as Peters Township involving students who thought they were talking to a fourteen-year-old, but in fact, they were talking to a thirty-year-old man who was trying to set up rendezvous with them. French and Spanish textbook adoption, I know I've talked about that at several meetings. We finally found some programs for French and Spanish, so you see later on in tonight's agenda, I'll be looking at adopting a program from Vista for both programs, so we're excited by that, because it's going to be a similar platform for both programs. They're going to come in and do an in-person training with our staff at the end of this school year, as well as at the beginning of next school year if we adopt that program. We also applied for a seventy-five thousand dollar competitive grant for dual enrollment, so the state opened up a dual enrollment grant. Just reiterating what Mr. Chambers has said at other meetings earlier than the year, competitive puts us at a disadvantage in our district, even though we have a socioeconomic status of twenty-eight percent for free and reduced lunch. There are lots of districts surrounding us that have significantly higher levels, but we did put in for the full total, and the state is reporting as of last week that we should know by the end of March that we're going to be a recipient of these funds. And then Mr. Daniels and I are also going to a separate dual enrollment meeting on Monday, March twenty-seventh, at the University of Pittsburgh, where we're going to be meeting with other schools, and there's potential for some, maybe some foundations to be there to talk about funding some dual enrollment programs. So we're excited to go to that, and hopefully have good news. As you guys know, we did propose earlier this year, and you did vote to expand our dual enrollment classes that we're offering through our college and high school, at the high school level, so we're going to do it regardless of getting these funds. These funds just would allow us to bring some equity in the program, help eat some of the costs that students would face. It does only cost two hundred and twenty-five dollars for a student to take a three-credit course, but that adds up for families, and so we recognize that, and we want to, you know, as part of this pilot program, if we do get this dual enrollment grant, knock down that financial barrier for some of our students when it comes to participating in those opportunities. And then Mr. Daniels, Ms. Taylor and I are also part of a reimagining high school cohort. We've been meeting with that. It's organized by Dr. Rolston at the University of Pittsburgh and the Tri-State Council. They had one meeting already this year. Out of that meeting, it spurred a site visit that Mr. Daniels, Ms. Taylor and I had to Franklin Regional High School. Uh, they had one meeting already this year, out of that meeting, it's burned a site visit, uh, that Mr. Daniels, Ms. Taylor and I had to Franklin Regional High School to look at a career program that they've had in place for ten years that kinda mirrors, uh, the career program that Ms. Taylor and I have been designing and developing for our high school. Uh, I think Mr. Daniels would agree, very productive meeting, uh, they helped walk us through a lot of our concerns about barriers. And that's really, was helpful for Ms. Taylor in her upcoming presentation that she'll do to the curriculum meeting, committee meeting in April. Um, and then we'll be hosting, uh, the next meeting here on March twenty-fourth, so I know I shared that at the curriculum committee. Uh, as soon as Mr. Daniels gets the agenda, I'll make sure to, to share with the board, 'cause I know some of you might be interested just to pop in and, and see what's going on, so.
Correction, correction.
Yes.
We, we are limited to administrators.
Okay, okay.
Pete mentioned that you had to share that, uh, so, sorry, but not this time around, um, it's a, it's an exploratory type project for, uh, superintendents and, uh, principals and a couple of other administrators, uh, if they'd permit us to bring along, um, you, you will be attending, but I didn't know that.
Yes, I did not, so. We'll share important things in the committee meeting about that, so. But I, I'm excited that you guys were excited for us to have this opportunity and that you wanna learn more about it. And we've already brought back information from some districts, we're gonna share the great things that Ken McMillan's doing at this and share what we wanna do and our vision moving forward and hopefully some of those districts have ideas and how to help us implement it at our level as well.
I saw Brittany, Ms. Taylor back there earlier, her student was here, um, but it was my understanding that during that session, uh, she was very much enjoying the quality content of the discussion, um, and was texting you.
Yes, she was texting me, you have to come to the next one, so.
We're looking forward to having, uh, you know, uh, twenty-two other school districts come and visit us, uh, at our high school, uh, as Ken mentioned, on the twenty-fourth, um, we're hosting cohort meeting number two.
That's, that's it, thank you.
Any questions for Ken? All right, next to Ken, Michael with recognition.
Yeah, we have the student reps here next week. We have a lot of recognition items, I'm just gonna kinda bring you some of us in this area, a couple senior football players, you're saying to recognize, uh, like Ken McMillan. The boys wrestlers, girls wrestling, um, our girls wrestling, it's so exciting, um, to, to, to have this new sport come to fruition and, you know, we're, we're right in it and our girls are, are really just amazing. And I don't mean to single anybody out here, I guess I just did, but, um, it's, it's exciting because it's, it's a new group and, uh, I think it's well on its way to becoming a recognized sport in, you know, the, the state.
They had one, they have one reading and they have to have two more readings for it to be adopted as a P I support.
Correct, the first two readings need fifty percent approval and the third reading needs seventy-five percent approval. It's actually gotta be a wet.
We have a Western Area Career Tech Center student, uh, who is in culinary arts program, uh, being recognized and, uh, I can tell you, I actually have a superintendent's meeting in the, um, uh, Career Tech Center today. And the culinary arts students prepared a lunch for us, a sandwich for us, uh, that's just outstanding, so. They do a really good job there. We also had a student recognized in the esports, uh, area of things and, uh, that's a big deal, that, uh, has really caught on fire, so to speak, uh, at the high school level. How many students do you think are?
Over a hundred, it's, it's our largest club that we have at the high school level.
It's really, yeah, it's a really big deal. Girls state qualifiers for wrestling, boys state place winners, uh, girls state place winners, um, girls wrestling team won, uh, Pennsylvania team title, um, ahead of nationally ranked Cambula Valley, which is twenty, um, in Bishop, uh, Bishop and Ford. Uh, there was long jump and hurdles and relays and shot put and, uh, more relays and, uh, long jumps and freestyle swimming. All of these students have received, um, uh, recognition for their, um, um, their involvement in esports. Uh, Wildenville, you've heard about, about Wildenville before in their, uh, school-wide positive behavioral support endeavors. Um, they've had fidelity checks of tiers one and tiers two, uh, and this is really, uh, all-encompassing, uh, at the elementary level. They're assessed to be recognized and they've been recognized, um, um, for seven years in a row, um, so that's a really big deal. It's a rigorous process and, uh, they, they stepped it up and they're still involved and recognized for their efforts. Also, our business manager, uh, Jonah Danny Davidson, uh, received a renewal status, uh, Pennsylvania certified school business administrator for the next four years. And that's through her organization that she served as, uh, the president of, um, and that is the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials. Yep, yep, she actually, uh, uh, was involved in the senate hearings yesterday as well, so I'm looking forward to her, uh, coming back on Monday and sharing a degree thing with me about that experience. I, I understand that the, uh, auditor general is very much involved in those proceedings and she was there as a resource to the panel, so that's a big. Thank you.
Ken, going back to the esports, are we seeing any scholarship opportunities out of that or anything?
Uh, so, there are scholarship opportunities, uh, none of our students have been receiving them yet, um, but our program just started this year, so that student who went to Nationals is a junior. So, we do anticipate that he's gonna start getting some scholarship opportunities available to him. They are participating in some competitions where scholarship money is on the line. There was one through the intermediate unit, we came in second, uh, we didn't come in first, but had they come in first, there would've been, there'd been some scholarship money available through Waynesburg University, so.
Did you see their new lab?
Yeah, Waynesburg has a beautiful state our lab. So, our kids are neck and neck with some of these established programs that have been around for several years, so the money's gonna start flowing, um, it's huge. I mean, Waynesburg has a team, Robert Morris has a team, so those are just two local colleges that are throwing scholarship money out. And next to watching the World Cup and the Super Bowl, it's the, the third most, um, financially productive event on the internet right now, so.
It's really interesting to see how the NIL stuff, not only goes to sports, but who knows, esports and how that starts floating down. Yeah, I'd like maybe at the next big reunion, try to come up and do a presentation of where NIL is and everything else.
Could, I, I'm not sure if it's, oh, yep. If it's far enough along.
You can get us a status update.
All right. Michael? Okay, uh, next week's meeting, we'll be voting on approving the following committee meeting minutes, the budget finance on February fourteenth, the board meeting from February sixteenth, curriculum from February twenty-second, and from March tenth, building and grounds from March fourteenth, and the agenda meeting for tonight, any questions on those? Moving along, we'll be looking at approving the wage tax report, treasurer's report, bills for ratification approval, and the budgetary transfer. Any question on any of those? All right, Michael, we're back on.
Okay, uh, so, the first item under my report is, uh, the creation of a fiber arts club. Uh, that was proposed and the bylaws were reviewed, uh, they're complete. They have a number of students already interested in being, uh, participants in this program. Uh, and typically, when we have the approval, when we ask for the board to approve a club, uh, mid-school year, uh, we find a sponsor who would agree to be a volunteer through the course of the rest of the school year and then we would plug them in as a paid sponsor, uh, next year. Uh, so I just wanted to clarify what that sponsorship piece looks like, um, but we do have that and, you know, uh, bylaws are available for review. The personnel sheets, as presented, uh, I think, um, we have, uh, one item under the assessment appeals and this is to authorize, um, our real estate council to participate in appraisal services, getting appraisal services for the property listed. Contracts and agreements, uh, we've already heard our internal reports, um, about the human capital management on the frontline, uh, Final Slate composer, uh, online training, I think you can speak to that, just very briefly, do you want to?
Uh, sure, so our current website platform got bought by our own website platform, so this is just a training, how, this is all additional, every principal. Yeah, I manage the website, uh, for everyone, that every principal has access to, and every partner has access to, so it's just a way for them to get a training, to learn a new platform on our website, it's gonna be available pretty soon this summer, so. Over the summer and next year and all the other years, we're gonna be skipping the website, I mean.
So, this'll be a step up with the tools that they offer and whatnot?
But that?
It'll be a step up with the tools that they offer and whatnot?
Yeah.
So, I think, um, you know, typically, this, this bill of a cost here is three hundred and fifty dollars. We wouldn't normally ask the board to approve this, but the way Final Slate has it drawn up, uh, for this training session is such that it's in addition to the currently existing contract that we have with them. So, because it's added to the contract, uh, we wanted to have the board approve it, um, so, yeah, just so there's. We talked about Power School SIS, uh, and InvoCare, we have an agreement with InvoCare, typically have that, uh, for special education services. Mr. Mayor talked about the buses and tires bids, uh, and I, I'll, I'll let you know that, um, the budget is twenty-three, twenty-four and we will reflect that accurately, uh, in next week's, uh, agenda before we approve it. Uh, we talked about the South Central Roof Restoration Bid, uh, the deed of dedication. Well, with this deed of dedication, because Peterstownship, uh, asked you, the board members, your, Ken and Mac, to approve that deed of dedication and send it back to them and would be done, um, we, we believe that would be the case, but because they redlined the deed of dedication, which is currently under review, uh, what we'll ask you to do next week, if indeed, uh, the, the revised deed of dedication is ready for approval, we will ask you to rescind the deed of dedication you've already approved and approve, approve the revised one. Uh, so, to avoid any confusion, that's why you see the two items there, the deed of dedication. Uh, donations, uh, receive a, we're asking you to accept a, um, donation of speakers in the amount of two thousand and seven hundred dollars, uh, from the swim and dive team booster club, uh, for the whole area. And a monetary donation in the amount of forty-eight hundred dollars from the Verizon Foundation for the Hills Hendersonville, uh, to purchase, um, a book vending machine. So, the way this works is, the students through their reading progress will earn tokens and the tokens operate the vending machine to get more reading materials, so that's a pretty neat mindset. Uh, student trips, um, we have boys varsity volleyball to State College High School, uh, for a tournament and softball spring training, as we typically have for, uh, trip to Taylors, uh, Taylorsville, North Carolina, um, and across the district. And the other cost for boys volleyball is, uh, really for land usage and gas. Disposal of property, uh, that involves our benchmark literacy materials, uh, we're still. And it's a good thing, we, through the current research and, uh, we're, we're, um, continually, uh, staying ahead of the game with, um, instructional practices to provide, uh, to our, our students in the area of reading and we, we find that, um, we're moving on and, and benchmark literacy is, uh, uh, benchmarking is not necessarily the way to go, um, anymore. And, uh, although we are asking you to dispose of, uh, these materials, there are some materials that teachers will continue to hold on to, they might be used for a while longer, um, but they still have permission to get rid of them if it, if this is, uh, under ready. Uh, special education settlement agreement, uh, is there for your, uh, approval? Uh, textbooks, Mr. Crowley spoke about the French, Spanish textbooks, do we have them here tonight for the school to read?
Yes, they are behind Ms. Harding over there, they're in that bin, I can pull them out if anyone wants to look at them.
So, yeah, take note, if you care to review those textbooks, they are there for your review. There's an arbitration, uh, that was nine hundred dollars, uh, that was discussed and our board is responsible for that. A shared transportation agreement, uh, with Charliers Houston School District, Mr. Mayor, if you wanna talk about it, you are just fiscally responsible in partnering with other.
Yeah, this, this is a common occurrence, um, if we have students with neighboring districts going to a, um, school that, you know, might be, if we're, if we have a van going to the Bridgeville area and, you know, Charliers Houston per se would have another student going in that area, instead of us each sending a van, we would split the cost to take one van there and take both students.
We did this with Ringel.
We did this with Ringel, with, um, a couple other districts, so, uh, pretty typical and, and that's the scenario here.
And it's written in the agreement, if for whatever reason the student, no longer attends, the agreement.
Yes, yes.
All right, and, uh, we will vote on the scheduled board meeting dates for the month of April for building and grounds, budget finance, our agenda meeting, uh, voting meeting, another budget finance meeting, and then the curriculum committee at the end of the month. And the halls.
Can I speak on that, uh, I know that was, it was his turn, it was on, not under my title, but I do have something, I'd like to share a couple things. Um, the agenda meeting in April is not the sixteenth, it will be the thirteenth and we will have that corrected to the agenda that, uh, we approved next week. Um, and in addition, I've, I've underlined all these old central office, old central office location, um, there, there is good reason for why we continue to be at old central office and we heard that, uh, the casework for the new boardroom is still, uh, being developed, designed, be, be ready, uh, getting prepared. Uh, we have all the electronics, um, I think, getting pretty well lined up, uh, for use and I think you're gonna be really impressed. Uh, we promised, uh, the community that when we move into that new boardroom, uh, that we're going to be recording meetings and, uh, they'll be available that way and we will have the technology to be able to do that. Uh, we'll make sure that, if we have a power outage, we're still gonna have a, a meeting and we'll still be lit up for a while, a grand roll. We, we've suffered enough down here and so has our community and we're gonna make sure that, you know, we're, we're in tune, good tune. Um, some have asked, well, why, why aren't you using the, the auditorium at the new middle school, why, why don't we do that? Um, we can't, we could, um, but, you know, like tonight, I mean, there are student activities, um, uh, that stage is full, they're having the middle school concert. Um, not that they have things scheduled like that for April, but they could. So, our committee meetings are typically, as you see, uh, ten through the, through the course of the regular school day. And, um, we don't want to pay, uh, to advertise these public meetings and then incur an additional cost if we should have to change the location of the meeting. So, it's responsible to just wait one more month, uh, to, to be here and, uh, wait for the, the goodness that will result in the use of our new boardroom. So, bear with us, be patient, we're all excited, we wanna do this and we will, um, but yes, take it a little more time and, um, we're, we're seeing the finish line. So, thanks for your patience and cooperation.
And then we will vote on, uh, electing Joel Chandler as, uh, the vice of Hall of Honor Board Representative next week. Okay, any other items of information anybody would like to discuss? All right, can I have your adjourn? Second, second. Welcome, Bernie, all in clear?
Hi, buddy.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.